Would you like to call this meeting to order? Would you rise for a salute to the flag, please?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag.
Let's legion soup flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you were. I would like to have a motion to go out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to move to action item number one on the agenda. Resolution, March 2024, approving the appointment of Michael Arkinson as a full-time police officer. So I'd like to congratulate Officer Arkinson on joining the force full-time. This young man came up through our TCO ranks, has worked for us part-time, and has been an excellent officer for us, so welcome to the full-time force, Mike. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
I just wanted to thank the mayor, Deputy Mayor, and the rest of the village board on recognizing the importance of this hire. I know things are tough these days, and we got a good one here. So Mike started as the mayor said, as one of our traffic control officers. He worked his way up to the TCO one, which is a leadership role, looking after the traffic control officers, then moving on to become a part-time officer, and now he's going to become a full-time officer. So not only did the department gain a great asset, so did ours, so thank you again.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Go out and celebrate.
Congratulations.
Yes, safely.
Yes. Congratulations.
Okay, so that'll bring us to the approval of minutes. A motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on February 13th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Corish, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the minutes from grievance day held on February 20th, 2024. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corish, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the budget meeting held on February 29th, 2024. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corish, second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That now brings us to the treasurer's report, Charles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, this time of year relatively quiet in the village and wait for the finances. So the report is pretty quick. From a revenue standpoint, you know, the major events these last couple months had been the seasonal dock renewals. The bills went out in December. So far, we've collected about $1,200,000 of dock renewal money, and that's slightly ahead of last year. That's a very positive sign, and that's also important for the village. In addition, we've also seen some good action in our building permits and fees. For the second month in a row, they've been ahead of last year. So hopefully that'll continue, because, you know, we're down from where we were a couple of years ago. So if that activity picks up, that's also a nice revenue stream for the village to start. And that's really it. On the dispersment side, nothing unusual. You know, our largest expenditure continues to be payroll and related costs and benefits. Aside from that, there were no significant, you know, one-time dispersments. So all in all, still, everything is holding together.
Okay. Any questions from trustees?
Nope.
No.
Do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, I have a second.
So moved.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. That brings us to our department committee reports. I will give the police, fire, and ambulance corps report. So attached, you will find a monthly report for February 2024. The police department had 631 calls for service, made five arrests, two of which were DWIs, and issued 105 uniforms, traffic tickets. That's from our Lieutenant Drake. So we had, as the lieutenant said, 631 calls for service. We had two aggravated unlicensed operations, one felony DWI, one aggravated DWI, one grand larceny in the fourth degree. We had one leaving the scene, and we had 11 motor vehicle accidents. Just kind of high.
Yeah.
So that's the report from Lieutenant Drake. That brings me to the fire department. In the month of February 2024, the fire department volunteered for 604 man-hours during the month. Officers and members of the department responded to 31 calls for service. These calls included two motor vehicle accidents with injuries, with one of them required to be airlifted to Stony Brook. So out of those accidents, those 11, we had one that was very serious injury. One call for downed power lines and multiple false alarms. We started the month off by standing by for the fireworks at Harbor Frost, which went off without any incidents. With February typically being a bit slower than other months, it gives us time to start thinking and preparing for the busy months to come. On note with the fire department, I did reach out to Metalcraft, who was building our fireboat. And they're telling me that the boat would be ready sometime in December. It was supposed to be ready this spring. But the Department of Defense had stepped in and asked them they were required to build extra boats for the Coast Guard and the Navy. So we got pushed off until December, but the boat is, they are starting to put the boat together. It should be ready in December. Depending on what the weather is like, we'll determine when the boat will actually arrive at Sag Harbor. So that's the fire department report. That's from our first assistant chief, Mike Regard. I've moved me to the ambulance corps, which is, the ambulance corps, emergency calls for February 2024 were 38. We had four work nights. We had two meetings, six training sessions, one work detail for a total number of 940 man-hours. The Sag Harbor ambulance sponsored a blood drive in February, collecting 111 pints of blood. And that's from our president of the ambulance corps, Missy Hessler. So that would conclude my reports. I will now turn to Deputy Mayor Hay, the parks, open spaces, justice court, and the planning board.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the justice court, and I'll try to be brief on all of these. The relative volume of activity in front of the justice court in February was relatively low, as would be expected this time of year. I would just want to call out, we have a budget meeting later this week. We've had a couple of budget meetings before, and I want to mention the work that Lieutenant Drake and the mayor have done. Frankly, in recruiting qualified employees, like the officer we just approved for a full-time position, the plan for the appropriate staffing levels in this coming fiscal year, in an increasingly difficult job market, as we saw last summer. So that work is prudent and much appreciated, and should have the added benefit of stabilizing the justice court revenues in the summer season this coming year. It also provides the village an opportunity to look for ways to improve enforcement with, as we saw last summer again, the increase in events, and even maybe getting solutions for things like tourists doing U-turns on Main Street, but we'll see. For planning, as many of you know, the planning board's gone through, I just want to speak to some process improvements that have happened at the planning board and are happening frankly here in the villages, in the village board as well. The planning board's gone through long periods with very little workflow, but over the past year, for a variety of reasons, the planning board's workload has increased. Most of those reasons were foisted upon the planning board by the village board, and the planning board has welcomed them. So the planning board's now addressing more and more complicated submissions. And as a result, the board chair has implemented some revisions to the review process and the preparation process for planning board meetings. As you know, they typically meet on the first, fourth Tuesday of each month. So the chair, the village staff, legal advisors, planning advisors have agreed to meet the Wednesday prior to the planning board meetings to review documents, create the agenda, circulate the planning board agendas online, hopefully Thursday before the planning board meetings occur the following Tuesday. They've set applicant submission deadlines for one week and one day, or eight days prior to the planning board meetings. And the goal is to have the planning board advisor reports completed and circulated to the planning board the Friday before the planning board meetings. The intent of these process improvements is to provide the planning board and its advisors with a meaningful opportunity to review the information submitted and reports prepared in advance of the board meetings, and to provide applicants with adequate notice and properly, proper time to prepare and attend the planning board meetings. I just want to applaud the planning board chair, who's here today, for his mindset of continuous improvement and looking to improve internal processes. I can tell you, the village board has worked on similar, over the last few months, internal process improvements in parallel. I mean, we are doing something similar where we're preparing draft agendas two or three days before the publication of those agendas, so we can review them, ask questions of each others about items that are being proposed for the agenda without violating the open meeting laws, so we can individually speak to each other to get more information, background, so we're better prepared for the meetings, and that way, there are fewer surprises for both us and the public on the meeting agendas as well, when they go public on the Fridays. So we, you know, nice that we're both working with the mindset of continuous improvements, the planning board, the village board, to try to improve the process for these meetings, the meeting agendas, our preparation, and public notice and public knowledge of what's on the agendas. This too is a work in progress. We'll continue to try to improve. We're never finished. Lastly, on park and open spaces. The parks and open spaces advisory committee has been working on draft traffic and environmental sciences and services, RFPs. They'll be discussed as action items, I think, later on tonight's agenda. I just want to say, and the village board has had a chance to review them in advance as well. So I just want to thank the post-hack committee members, the board and council for all the work that went into developing these draft RFPs that we'll be discussing later in the, as of next time. That's all from me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hay. That brings us to Trustee Corish with the sewer department, village grants, and zoning board of appeals. Before I get to you, trustee, I just wanted to say that I had spoken to you about the Senator Schumer, the office calling me about the appropriations bill that was passed, and that Sag Harbor will be getting 1.25 million for the sewer expansion.
Yep.
And what I was told is that Sag Harbor submitted, and they thanked me for Sag Harbor submitting an excellent application. So I just wanted to pass that on to you.
Well, I wish I could accept those accolades. I actually don't write the application. They're not by Jen Essie Adam, who's our grant writer, but it truly is a team effort, has been for a number of years. So with that, I'm going to go straight to the sewer treatment plant, then we'll come back to grants in a second. So the report for this month, the total gallons received is 1.459 million gallons. Last year, I think we treated about 28.5, 29 million gallons went through sewer treatment plants in total. So that's sort of a remarkable number. The DMR reports are forwarded on the 5th of March, Suffolk County DHS inspection date. We can expect a next inspection on 0108. New York State DC inspection data is always, is open. We've had no complaints for the month, and just a summary of operations. The wastewater treatment plant is running well, under all permitted levels, and we're now operating on just two of the five basins, so that's 40% capacity. There were three spot repairs performed on the sewer main, on Main Street 220, and we hold out 19,000 gallons, as we said earlier, of sludge by Quack and Bush. The flow from January through February was a decrease of 209,000 gallons. So that's the report of the sewer treatment plant, but going to grants, which does affect or does include the sewer treatment plant. So following up on Mayor, there was a bill went through the House and has been passed by the Senate, and now will be signed by the president. And in that bill, there's $1.25 million for Sag Harbor for sewer expansion. That money will be overseen by the EPA, I believe. So we're expecting to hear from them. We'll go to a contract. I don't know what restrictions around that money, or what we can spend it on, but it seems quite broad, so we can use it to support our project. I also have the understanding that it's not a reimbursement grant, but again, that has to be confirmed, so that would help us finance the project upfront, because we'll do rolling applications for reimbursement from the various other grant sources. Other news on the grant, those of you who read the local newspaper, which I hope is everybody, will know that New York State awarded us 100% of grant application to $5,972,000 for the K and L sewer project. So we're looking forward to signing a contract for that, and we hopefully are fully funded for this. So we're sort of switching gears from fundraising into execution. I'd like to take a moment to thank a number of people who really made this happen, and that's Tom D'Antoni, East Hampton Town, CPF, David Lees, oh, sorry, Tom D'Antoni, South Hampton Town, the CPF, David Lees, East Hampton Town, Fred Peal, of course, who set up the CPF. And the magic of the CPF for us, when we get money for water quality, we can use it to fund the project, but we get a second use out of it, because we use it to leverage state funds. All the state funds require a local match, sometimes 25%, sometimes 30%. So if we get $100,000 from CPF Water Quality locally, we get to spend that $100,000 on a project. We also go to the state of New York and say, hey, we'd like to apply for this grant in the tune of $400,000, and here's our local matches done. So sort of an ingenious way of leveraging money out of the community from New York State, and we're very lucky to have that. And Fred Peal, I think, was instrumental in putting all that together, plus all the people of our local communities who voted for it on a number of occasions. Also Senator Plumb, who is very much part of this, in the state and following and seeing this through. So this is great news for the village. I think we're on the threshold of some big projects, which I'm sure will have their own headaches, but as everybody keeps a sense of proportion about that, this is a long-term deal. We're putting in 100-year infrastructure that will help to maintain the cleanliness or improve the cleanliness of our bays and coves for the next generation beyond. And that's my report, Mayor.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I did receive a personal phone call from Congressman LaLota to inform me about the House passing the appropriations bill. And I thanked him, and I just wanted to make the Sag Harbor residents aware that we had, you know, Republican congressmen, Democratic senators, Senator Schumer, Senator Gillenbrand, who supported this bill, so had bipartisan support. So there's Sag Harbor, an example of where
Bringing people together.
People come together.
As the same, you know, Senator Plumb has been very supportive of all, everything we're doing in the state. Fred Peal, of course, who could have done any of this without him. So it takes a big team effort, and so far, so good.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. So that brings us to trustee Plum for Public Works, Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review. Trustee Plum.
Thank you. Mayor, highway department has been busy patching potholes all around the village. Suffolk County Water is working on all those water service tie-overs on Williams Street and Henry, where they extended the main. February 13th, we received three to five inches of snow. February 17th, two to three inches of snow, all of which is gone. Highway department laid out over 100,000 gallons of salt brine on the roadways prior to each snowstorm. The highway is starting to clean up the rain gardens and parking lots around the village. Highway continues to clean up some catch basins in the village, or the sweeper, super sucker combination. And as far as the HBA, we're looking to, at one point, we were talking about adding two members, but that was, we realized that was probably not a great idea, given the quorum. We might not have all those people. So we are considering adding an architect and a landscape architect as consultants to that board that would be paid for by the applicant. And it just brings a little level of expertise and other, you know, expertise to the process. And we are working on that now, and that's my report.
So I just wanted to add to trustee Plum's report. I had reached out to trustee Plum and D. Yardley about the benches that are on Main Street, how they're basically, you know, if you look at them, they're covered in this mold growing on them, and they need a really good cleaning. And thank you to trustee Plum and Dee that they're going to take care of the benches this week. They're going to, I guess, power wash and maybe a little bleach and power wash. So thank you, and thank you to Dee for taking care of it. It's going to be done this week. Thank you, trustee Plum. And that brings us to trustee Kane with the building department, harbor and docks, and the harbor committee.
Hi, so I'm going to start with the building department. As you heard, our trustee, I mean, our treasurer, Charles, he had mentioned that we are running at a nice pace. So for the month of February, it came in at just north of 72,000 versus last year, it was 27,000. I'm just giving round numbers, so about two and a half times for this month. That puts us at the year, the combination, you know, two months in calendar year, we're running ahead by two times. So this doesn't predict how the rest of the year will be, but it is always nice to have that money in your pocket already, so we look forward to that. The number of permits, where there were nine building permits that were issued in the month of February, 60 inspections, and five certificates of occupancies were issued, three notices of violations. So they continue to be busy. You know, it's interesting, different months of the year, you never know exactly what's going to be happening on the building side. And with the weather, even though we did have the snow, there were days that the construction guys were out there working hard with the weather. Now, on the harbor committee, they did host Dr. Goldor, who is from Stony Brook SUNY, and he came and gave his presentation, which a big part of his recommendation was to expand the sewer treatment plant to the lower-lying areas. And so it's just, it's so exciting to have these grants coming in and knowing that it's just not a plan that we hoped for, but this is going to become a reality. We know it will take time, as trustee Cornish said, but it's in sight. So it's just, it's just really fantastic. So I just want to hit on that. And then with regard to the harbor master, again, as our treasurer pointed out, we are running ahead of last year, which is great to see that the, and this is really just as we know, for all the inner harbor docks and marinas, we will make the final determination on where we're going to come out on the moorings, you know, as we continue to develop. We want to thank, I really want to thank the harbor masters and all those that were involved in helping us put together the presentation for the work session. I hope everyone found it informative, and we will look to continue to work with the board and getting the feedback from people to come up with that, what that final plan will be. We will most likely have to make a decision on what will happen for the outer moorings in the next month. So just for people to be aware, the major changes will probably be for the 2025 season, though, not for this season, so that we can have the thorough process that we want to continue on. And when we, when we look at the docks and the moorings, we're excited about this strong upcoming season. Otherwise, it was quiet. There were a couple of boats that are out there trying to do some scalping and some weekend fishing that were out there for the month of February. All the ice eaters have been removed. They've done the power washing on all the docks and the dinghy docks, so the harbor masters have been busy even in the month of February. And I do want to say, they've completed the hiring for the upcoming season. Just to note, we've lowered the number of dockhands that was 14 last year. It's down to 12 for this year. And of those 12, five of them are full-time, and then the remaining seven are part-time. So just everyone kind of has a feeling for how they rotate, and they move the dockhands in and out, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Kane. So that gets us to public comments. We have 15-minute public session. Input for comments and questions, limit three minutes per speaker on the treasurer's report and the department reports. Yes.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Gilbert, I'm from Atlanta, Gazzling, I'm not going to ask, how's your company, how's your planning?
Currently, you don't.
Because it reflects on the grant, that we haven't gotten a contract.
Yeah, we were waiting for a contract from New York State for the grant. They say we're not going to see that till at least May, because everybody's busy with budgets. So we have to get a contract first before we can proceed with any work on that. So with the state of New York, and that will have conditions. And so once we have that, that's it.
Thank you.
Sorry.
John?
Thank you. Jeff Harper, 33, Shaw Road. I just want to say first that the work session that you had before with Drake actually reminded me of some of the work sessions that we had seven or eight years ago in regards to the expanding jurisdiction and trying to get that through. And Chris Durya, you know, echoed a lot of the things that were said at that time and by John Jack, who's the chair of the harbor committee at the time. I think it raised a lot of good questions, and it raised a lot of good questions about possible limitations on a number of boats, environmental damage, safety issues, et cetera. And I'm not going to go into all the details or, because I think everything was covered one way or the other by the speakers who spoke earlier, but I'm going to add to it. I'm going to add a request to that, which I mentioned to some of you in between the meetings. I think there's a serious risk that we're going to have an expansion on the number of moorings and anchoring boats for this board can take action. Right now, nothing prevents me, you, somebody else from going out and putting down a number of warrants and requesting an affirmative issue for that, because we have no limit on the number. The number last year, 67, was considerably above the number that there were three years ago, which was more like 30-something. So here's my request. In order to preserve the situation out there, until you consider all the things that were presented to you today, and this is authorized by section 27815 of the water waste law, which says, "Changes in the designated mooring and anchoring may be made by resolution of the village board." And then it goes on to give reasons, including blessed phrases and for many other reasons. Here's the resolution that I've requested, in light of today's public work on the outer mooring area, in order to prevent further expansion before further consideration can be completed, be it resolved that until further action of this board, the number of mooring permits to be issued for the outer mooring area shall be limited to the same number as were issued in 2023. Very simple, and you can change it at any time, but it does cover you for now, that you won't have the situation where by the time you can come back and make further consideration, somebody's saying, oh, I already have 30 more out there.
Thank you.
I think that it's a serious consideration that we should, we should think about. Is this something that we have to prepare legally and vote on, or can we just?
Yes, we did a resolution.
Right, so it would take us time to do that, correct?
You know, as an aside, the yard yard bought a new mooring boat, mooring handling boat.
It's because they sank the other one.
300,000.
So I think, listen, John, I would definitely consider that, but we need time to prepare the document legally, so.
I understand that, but my suggestion would be, I think you're going to have other board meetings between now and April 1st. I understand you're going to have budget meetings, you'll have other meetings. This is not something that has to wait a whole month. It's not a change in the law, and it doesn't require a public notice. You've already had an hour and a half of consideration on the issue, so it can't be argued that you did not consider it, or that you did not give people an opportunity to be heard, because you did.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Appreciate that. Anybody else? Tiffany?
Hi, Tiffany Scorlato, 83 Franklin Avenue. Wanted to talk a little bit about the sewer district expansion and the cost of the debt servicing that was going to be repaid. The resolution itself, is it clear about how that debt service is going to be paid? Is that being paid by the district itself, the members of the expansion, or is that district as a whole, village as a whole? Sorry, I don't need to say district, fine.
Okay, essentially, it's going to be paid for through grants. We are, we, and the interest payment on the we will, we will be raising funds to cover the cost of the grants and we'll be applying for reimbursement in tranches. So whatever the amount of money we um, we approve to go for, for, for bond or for uh, to raise funds is not necessarily what we will be using at any one time. We have raised in the regions of about sixteen million dollars for the project. So far, we spent money on master plan, which you've talked about tonight on engineering and other work. We will go to bid, um, but we're not going to go to bid until we have our funding in place. And then what we, with the village, the entire village will be paying the interest on that, which we.
And the debt service, if there's any left principal, will also be paid by the entire village?
By the entire village.
Okay. And, and that's, I guess, what I wanted to address. I just wanted to confirm that because having been a village trustee and having been involved in sewer litigation for many years, the issue in that sewer litigation, which was finally resolved in two thousand and nine, the village was successful. Um, the village was sued over the idea that those costs should be spread out over the village. And the village maintained the position that, no, just the members of that fund and the people that were hooked up to that district
Right.
are responsible for the infrastructure surrounding that district. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that it's a significant change in policy for this board to decide at this point to move forward in a way that impacts the rest of the village, whereas in many years past and up until this very point, and today even, the debt service for that is being paid by sewer district.
Right. Could I interject something here? I think water quality concerns the whole village, not just the sewer district.
It certainly does, but it's a, it's an issue that the taxpayers should be aware of.
Yes, they should be aware of. And I, I, listen, I wanted to issue, and I would like to issue a challenge to the village residents. And I've spoken about this before. I'm not saying that, I'm not mandating people to do this. I'm just putting it out there that everybody in the village should either be connected to the sewer or should have an IA system. And we, as a board, moving forward, we're going to have discussions about how we can assist people in getting their IA systems. There was a fund.
So if I today, so I want to hook up to the high water sewer system.
I'm not talking about today. I'm talking about in the future, moving forward, that we need to have, this is a discussion that the residents and the village board needs to have moving forward.
I'd like to speak to motivation as well. When originally the sewer system was laid out, it was essentially for the commercial district. It was to promote the commerce.
By consent order, by, from the D E C.
From the D E C. Okay, right. But essentially, it, it, it did not, we have very, very few private homes connected. It's main, it's essentially the commercial district is over ninety percent, probably over ninety-five percent of the inflow. The motivation behind this process was water quality. And we didn't pick and choose winners and losers as far as who gets connected and who doesn't. We created this document. Um, we are going to adopt this document this evening, and we divided the village into sewer sheds. And our, and our guiding principle in all of this from the very beginning was the maximum reduction of nitrogen from flowing into our waters for every dollar spent. So that guided us throughout all of this. The entire village and the community benefits from clean water. And the fact that us, that we connect certain homes, they are just a vehicle towards clean water. We're connecting the most polluting homes, the homes that are sitting in low-lying areas or high with, so the homes that are not suitable for IA systems because the size of the lots are such. And also homes where the water table is so high that you'd have to raise the entire neighborhood, like Rose Street and that whole area back there. So the, I think there's a huge difference between what happened then and what's happening now. The world has changed. I think we sat here tonight. So I thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I just want everyone to know that it's a significant change in policy because I remember sitting where you guys were sitting and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars litigating that very issue to success. And only for us to turn around and say, no, now we're going to charge the entire village for those costs.
When was that? How long, how long ago was that?
It was two thousand and nine.
Nine, right.
But it was finally resolved. Litigation went on probably for fifteen or twenty years.
Right. So the litigation started, so it's almost forty years ago.
Well, like I said, it's, it's a significant departure from policy. And that's all I really wanted to point out and make sure that everyone's aware.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Anybody else? Russell?
Thank you very much, Russell Crowe, Lady Tree Franklin Avenue, Sapporo. Thank you for listening. Um, I appreciate the work of any village treasurer and, and um, it's, it's a difficult job. But I, I do want the board to know that I, I do think we need a little more transparency in um, our financial resolutions. Um, in our website, in those types of things, okay? Um, while your resolutions are very vague, your bond resolutions, she tonight, vague. I want to protect the village, okay? You really should have published and have right sitting here, the full resolution, okay? And all the implications of having a bond, okay? Your warrants are vague, okay? Warrant number this, warrant number that doesn't say what it is, doesn't really delineate. So I just think a little more transparency, it just takes a little more time to put that in there. Your online budget's hard to find, okay? If you've had, if your audits are complete, your annual audits, they're hard to find if they're on your website at all. So I just think it's, I think it's necessary to kind of have a little more transparency on it. You don't have your audit committee listed, which is mandated by law to have an audit committee. So you don't have it listed who's on that. Um, I also recommend that you might put together a finance team, okay? The village, you have a lot of things going on here, okay? You're, you're building parks, you're buying this, you're doing this, you're adding under the sewer, right? You know, how about a little capital budget planning? How about some long-term financial plans, multi-year planning? And, and put it out there. Put some residents who have some experience on these committees and do some multi-year planning. Some of your debt service, I've looked at it, very sporadic for years. If you look at your budget sort of years, up, down, over, out. Just going forward, you want to maybe say, you know what? We have a lot going on here. I mean, we, we were this little village, and now we've got multimillion-dollar things going on here. And I think we need to, you know, do a little more planning, be a little more transparent about it, okay? And add a little public input on it. Um, replacement schedules, okay? Maintenance of village assets, trees, sidewalks, roads, drainage, whoop, drainage. We just talked about the sewer and talked about it's in how important it is that the sewer district or sewer fund is going to help, okay? You have so little money in your budget for drainage, it's almost embarrassing, okay? I was a village treasurer for eighteen months in Southgate Village. We spent a million dollars in eighteen months through C P F funds for upgrading our drainage, okay? You talk about water quality, drainage here, ooh, it's, you know, it's bad, okay? Vehicle replacement and capital improvements. So I just ask, I know, I know that the job is difficult. You've got people coming at you from the airport angle, okay? But go back to your basics and say, what are our principal responsibilities to the taxpayers of this village? What are we providing for them for basic services? And what is our plan for these basic services going forward and how are we going to pay for it? Thank you.
By the way, Russell, we do have a budget meeting this Thursday, correct, Charles?
Yep.
Yep.
Four o'clock. But you wanted to say something?
If I could, to your point, we are, we have been spending time over the last several months. And hopefully the next, by the next board meeting, we'll have recommendations for much of what you've already, what you're requesting in terms of capital planning. We're putting together a capital program. We're putting together an advisory committee um, of community residents um, with great financial expertise to work with our treasurer and members of the board for building a capital program for the village. Um, and funding, looking for funding sources for the capital program for the long-term projects that the village requires. Um, in, in this meeting later tonight, we have you know, some of the preliminary work we're doing for RFPs, we're planning on to help us prioritize the work and solutions going forward. And those things are on the work, to your point. It does take a while to get these things going, to get them up and running. Um, we are a small community with a limited staff. Um, but we're building that into the budget going forward, both from an O N M perspective and a long-term capital perspective as well.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Okay, that brings us. Yes.
Hi, I'm Erin Price. I live at thirty-sixth Park Avenue in Sag Harbor, Illinois. Um, so I'm just um, wanting to make a, just a quick comment about the moorings. I was able to go to um, a part of the working group, um, which was great. And I know several people did comment on that. Um, but I would really like to emphasize two points. One is that um, we, our community has um, private, a private beach along the bay there. And so the outer mooring area, that new new expanded area, obviously already it's still an area, but expanded with more moorings. We're really concerned about um, the increasing number of vessels and large vessels that would be out there and impacting um, the water there in our bay area, which is, like I said, is a private area, lots of families, lots of children, because it's nice, it's on the beach. Same with Haven's beach, but um, but I can't really speak to that. Um, I'm just speaking for our, for our area. So we're really concerned about that and um, really hope that you will take that into consideration. And we are also concerned that um, that uh, the, any vessels that have violations um, isn't really being, you know, addressed. Um, I, I know that there, there will be less dockhands this year. I think twelve to fourteen.
We're going to go from fourteen down to twelve.
Yeah, so um, so it seems like there is sort of less resources on that, but now we have more vessels. So um, you know, there are lots of concerns and, and my community and our neighboring communities have submitted written questions and written comments and things like that. So we will continue to do that, but I did want um, you know, to be, you know, on the record in here and really hope that those considerations will be taken, um, you know, taken into consideration, that kind of um, you know, what we think is a detriment to the area. And, and if it is going to go forward and you are going to allow this, then at least um, there's going to be like meaningful enforcement. Um, and not just um, you know, a violation here, a violation there, because that can't be, it can't be that there's just one boat that's doing something, you know, that they shouldn't be doing.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
I think Rosal.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm sorry I tuned in a few minutes late, but I caught the end of Deputy Mayor uh, Hayes' presentation about um, I guess, streamlining different processes. And I, the part that I was quite, wanted to know a little bit more about was uh, getting the material prior to a meeting. I understood that there was an effort to try to do that. Would that include the agenda packet? Because the agenda is often listed on the website, but there's no documents attached. It says agenda packet, but no documents. So unless you're at present at the meeting, you actually don't have an opportunity to look at the items, so to speak.
This time it does not, but as I said, we are in the process of continuing improvement. We will try to keep making the process easier, more transparent for us as trustees and the public to access uh, and gain information. But as of this, no, sorry.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I, as I said, I caught the very tail end of that, so I just had a question about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Cassie? Anybody in the audience? Okay, so that moves on. We move on to introduction. We have three uh, three local laws to introduce. One is, the first one is resolution to schedule a public hearing on April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, to consider local law amending village code two twenty dash one point three to extend the sewer service areas as set forth in the village of Sag Harbor Sewer Master Plant. Do you want to speak really quick on this, counsel, or?
Yeah, this is, I think, going, going back to what we spoke about earlier. This is to allow us to extend this, to extend the service areas, as we've talked about through area K and L in the village, so that we can connect um, what are some of the most polluting homes to the plant. Um, to benefit everybody with the uh, enhancement of our clean water. Um, that's the stuff.
It's also um, setting a public hearing to review this as well.
To review this document. This is, yeah, sewer master plant, which has been like three or four years in, in the making. Um, this is going to become part of our village code, I would imagine.
Yeah, when the local law is adopted, well, you will also adopt the master plant.
And for any of you who are insomniacs, maybe you want to pick up a copy of this. There is actually some, there's a great index and there's, you can, you can, you can zoom in on different parts of the village that may be of particular concern to you. So it's uh, I recommend you, if there are copies there, please take one.
And, and when we say um, trustee Corus, this will go into the comprehensive plan as we get to that point.
Yeah, this will be a big part of the comprehensive plan in the village. As we can see, it identifies a lot of issues in the village and um, gives us a really good roadmap as to how we can mitigate some of these issues and you know, what the low hanging fruit is and what we can do with what we have. Um, so I would like to make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Corus. Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so public hearing is set for April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. That gets us to uh, we're going to skip number two. That gets us to number three.
Sorry, can I just go back for one sec?
Sure.
I thanked a lot of people tonight, but none of this would have been possible without the help of John Parker. I'm not sure if he's still in the room. Oh, he did?
He said he had to go to dinner.
He had to go to dinner? Anyhow, John and I have worked in the last step um, on this for all of these years. And I'm sorry he's left, but let the record show. Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to resolution to schedule a public hearing on April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, to amend local law amending village code two sixty-five dash seven, use of sidewalks and two sixty-five dash nine, to clarify the code and eliminate any conflicting code provisions regarding bicycle routes within the village. You want to speak on this?
Sure. This came out of the POSAC committee. It was a recommendation with regard to changing the bicycle routes um, in the village code. And um, I don't know if you've wanted to elaborate as to why, but it's eliminating um, the prohibition on Long Island Avenue for bikes. And then it's um, including Hempstead Street and Bay Streets as authorized bike routes to link up the already existing bike routes that are in the village.
Yes, thank you. This came out of the POSAC committee, spearheaded by John Shaka, the head of the planning board, and Lieutenant Drake um, to resolve any conflicts or inconsistencies with our code and to expand our existing bike routes, which we have to do by code um, to the extent feasible.
Does this involve any painting?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Shaka to come up and answer your question specifically.
I didn't hear a question.
Does this involve paint, painted bike lanes?
Not yet. Not yet. This, this is just um, uh, clarifying what the bike routes are.
Okay.
Um, so that you all can make decisions going forward, how you want to use those bikes.
We have to spend the money. This just allows us to do that, or it gives us the guidelines to do that.
By including, say, uh, Hempstead and Bay Street on the list of official bike routes is therefore, that, that area can be part of the, the comprehensive bike route, and you can plan accordingly.
And paint accordingly.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, John.
I'll just, where there's a typo on the hearing date, the hearing, public hearing will be April ninth, Tuesday, April ninth, just like your regular meeting day.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hayes, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, set the public hearing for April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Next, we have resolution to schedule a public hearing on April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, to amend the local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in General Minister of Law three dash C. This is a practice that has gone on in the past where we uh, usually pass right, a local law to pierce the cap. That doesn't mean we're going to pierce the cap, but it gives us flexibility if that happens to be the case. Um, I need a motion to introduce motion by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sets the public hearing for April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. That brings us to our public hearing. Uh, which we have local law, two thousand and twenty-four, a local law to amend village code three hundred dash fourteen point five, section A, section seven, to allow the planning board sixty days after the pre-submission conference written comment period ends for the planning board to issue a pre-submission report. I believe this is, we had some problems with the thirty-day.
Right, since the planning board only needs once a month, we needed more than thirty days. We realized that the planning board could not meet the thirty-day time limit for issuing a pre-submission report. Therefore, they've asked for a local law amending it to be sixty days. Um, and this is the continued public hearing on that matter.
Do I have a motion to continue the public hearings?
Well, it's still open.
Okay, does anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Tiffany?
Hi, Tiffany Scarrato, forty-five Division Street, Sag Harbor. Speaking as both a resident, again, and as a practitioner. Um, I practice here in the village very often. Uh, most of the site plan applications that are on the planning board agenda currently are mine. Um, and so I've been through the pre-submission conference a couple of times. Um, and I've said very publicly, I think, at the beginning, when this pre-submission conference was first instituted, that I believe today I did about five months to a process. And actually, I actually put a little timeline together for you, just to illustrate how it's currently working in its current, with the thirty-day requirement right now. If I were to submit an application today, March twelfth, the next meeting is March twenty-second, twenty-sixth. I'm not going to make it on that agenda. I don't know, it's for some reason, things don't get out that quickly and whatever. I'm not going to make it to the March. I'm not gonna make it on that agenda. I don't know, it's for some reason, things don't get out that quickly and whatever. I'm not gonna make it to the March twenty sixth agenda. I'm gonna be on the April twenty third agenda. At that meeting, they're gonna have a resolution to schedule a public hearing. On May twenty eighth, I'm gonna have a pre-submission hearing, which remains open ten days after the May twenty eighth hearing. That means until June sixth. Then they have thirty days to prepare that report. That's July sixth. July sixteenth is the first meeting in which that pre-submission report currently. That's if I submit an application today. July sixteen is the first meeting in which that pre-submission report would be adopted. Which means that the next submission that I could possibly make would be in August. And that's if I'm quick enough to turn it around and get have all my consultants in line to turn something around and get it back to you. So in all likelihood, the first application, the first review, true review on the planning board agenda would occur on September twenty fourth of twenty twenty four. And that's if I submitted an application today. And that's just your pre-submission conference process. In my mind, there's actually, there's really no reason why they can't complete it in thirty days. The application, if they were submitted, like I said, in my little example, if today I submitted an application on March twelfth. The review of that application should commence as soon as it's submitted. Most of what that pre-submission conference does is outline what processes are gonna need to be committed to, what. Uh, what other approvals you're gonna need to be, you are gonna need to be required. And based on the application process, most of that work can get done upfront. The last part of that work is inserting the public comment, which doesn't take you sixty days after the public hearing. Or sixty days plus ten, so seventy days after the public hearing in order to get that put in right.
You got a question, Bob, that you want to make?
I do have a question. My, that these are volunteer boards and not charging by the hour.
People that I'm paying to make sure the reviews are done on time are not volunteers. Nelson Pope and Voorhees makes a very good living reviewing these reports, and there's no reason why they can't get it done in thirty days. Simple.
Well, that's your opinion. Apparently it's not, I have others.
Well.
It's, it's an opinion. It's an opinion. Um, what I'm suggesting to you is that you've already added five months to the process and now you're suggesting that you add another month to that process. I just said to you.
My question is, I have the same question you have Tiffany, which is why, and please. Why has it taken sixty days to, to do these planning studies?
So, can council respond?
Yeah, sure. So the reason is that um, even though Nelson Pope and Voorhees prepares the report. The report has to be reviewed and adopted by the planning board to make it a planning board issued report. To make sure that what the, the consultant is recommending is actually represents the views and recommendations of the planning board itself. Not just the reviewer. Um, so that's why it takes longer, because they could, they can prepare the report within thirty days. But sometimes, since the board only meets once per month, we can't get it adopted by the planning board and issued to the applicant within that timeframe. We, it's, it's, it's just not possible. Um, well, it hasn't been on, on, on at least one occasion.
Right, and one application, I did a substantial extension.
Yeah, and it hasn't been possible. Um, therefore, we've had to ask for sixty days in order to make sure that the planning board can comply with the code. Um, so that's happened at least twice.
So even, even if Nelson Pope issues it, it has to be reviewed by the board. It's the board's report and, and recommendations.
And, and the whole purpose of the pre-submission conference was to allow for the public to weigh in. On larger applications right at the initial stages of review, because they were very upset that they were having to wait for the public hearing process. When the application had already been before the planning board for several meetings. Now that being said, if the board would like, you know, you can certainly take a look at what application should be getting a pre-submission review. Maybe it should be honed down even more, so that only very large applications get this pre-submission review. That's something that the board could consider. Um, and take a look at what applications are getting pre-submission and whether or not those are the ones you think that should be getting an extra review like that.
So right now, are we seeing all applications?
No, there is a list, there is a code, and you can see which ones.
Triggers planning.
That triggers pre-submission, this extra hearing process in the beginning. Right, so this is the additional six months.
And can I, we have the planning board chairperson here, like the hearer's perspective on this.
Certainly, if, what, if I'm welcome to finish my comments, I'm having to do that, see?
Thank you all, John Shaka, um, chair of the planning board. Um, a couple things. We're requesting. I, I guess we didn't need for questioning, you, you folks are considering, considering sixty days of an option. Um, in my mind, if we can do it in thirty days, we'll do it in thirty days. I have no interest in having things stay on the agenda. We try to move things uh, swiftly. The reason there was an issue was because it was a holiday period. It was Thanksgiving, Christmas, Hanukkah, New Years. And it was, I think, thirty, it was three weeks between meetings because we had to move December meeting forward. But we, so that was less than thirty days. Thus, it became January. And that was a problem for this particular applicant. So in that case, we needed this as a, as a device. To, that allowed us to be um, consistent with code. Uh, but normally, we would just do it in thirty days. I would think. I think.
If it's possible, yeah.
Yeah, if possible.
If you receive the report and you have time to review it and you want to adopt it at that meeting, then yes.
And that's part of the internal processes improvements you've made too. If the submission occurs. You know, just a couple of days before the planning board meeting, that creates another set of concerns.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
It's like when that first submission comes in, where, where it is relative to your meeting.
That's right.
Well, this submission would be from Nelson Pope and Voorhees to the board though, right? So they have to also have time to review the report before they decide to adopt it and issue it.
That's right. And, and to, to be fair to Nelson Pope, they've, uh, she, um, Catherine's been very good about. Uh, just turning things around as quickly as possible. Um, these were a couple complicated uh, applications. It took some time. We did the best we could. The holidays got in the way and the scheduling got in the way and we had to sort of push it to the next month.
And there was an, and, and listen, everything can be tweaked, can be improved, but there was an intentional reason to have a pre-submission conference for these more complex applications. Going before the planning board, to give the planning board a meaningful opportunity to review and the public a meaningful opportunity to provide input before. We went too far down the road.
And may I say, the, part of that intent as well was having review and having public input. Um, before the applicant spent a lot of money on plans. So maybe they're spending more on waiting us for a month or two. Um, but they're not spending as much on plans which have been jettisons for a new set of plans. That's the concept of that.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Just have one suggestion, and I don't know if it's possible, but the pre-submission hearing resolution, very lot, very much like zoning board resolutions. When they're noticed for public hearing, is that possible that that's done internally, so that we're not taking up an additional meeting in order to do that?
Cause that, cause that, yeah.
Because that takes it, honestly, that's an, that's for sixty days.
That is, that's what's taking.
Could you explain that more for me?
So that's, that's when I'm, it's, the planning board is passing a resolution to notice, just like you'd notice your public hearings. To notice the pre-submission conference and to make sure it's put in the paper. She's asking if we could change that to maybe have it done internally, so that it doesn't require the planning board to issue a resolution. Um, to actually set that uh, pre-submission conference hearing in the paper. Um, that's.
So it's the public noticing the paper.
Right, because it takes the planning board, you know, at the public meeting to adopt that resolution, to set the public hearing.
Right, right, right.
Does that make?
They don't necessarily have to do that, very much like the zoning board, it can be done if the legislature needs some.
Mr. Shaka, do you have an opinion or comment on that?
I, if, if that is good with our train, I would make.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just trying to keep it moving along so that it's not slowing us down. I know sometimes it takes sixty days because of the time.
How does that affect public notice about it? It doesn't?
It, it doesn't affect the public notice. It just, it limits it from how, it, it makes it quicker because it could be done internally versus having the planning board wait for it.
And how would we do it internally?
It would be through the staff and the building department.
So just to get the notice out there so the public are aware and they can come and participate if they wish. Seems like the simple solution.
Yeah, I'm more for going things.
Like I said, I would object to the extension of sixty days if we can limit the time as in between all of that.
So as long, as long as that, you know, chair of the planning board has authorized the, the building department to issue the notice internally. We're covered, the public's covered.
Right.
Thank you very much. I'll just have to make sure it's not in the code that way. I don't need another code we're going to change.
Whatever it takes.
I guess, is there any other input from the public on this? Local law? Do we want to continue the public hearing for next month?
To see if you need another revision for the code?
I'm asking to adopt this.
I think we should adopt it.
And then make another of local law, because I don't wanna be in violation of the code at the planning board level.
Yep, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move it.
Second.
Seconded by, motion by Deputy Mayor Hayes, seconded by trustee Kane. Alls in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hayes, seconded by trustee plum. Alls in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? The local law is, the village code, excuse me, local law to amend the village code is now adopted. Uh, that brings us to the continued public hearing. Local law amending village code three hundred, attachment two. Table of dimensional regulations to limit the gross floor area per business establishment occupancy square feet. To two thousand square feet in the office district.
This is a continued public hearing on this matter. This is where the um, maximum gross floor area per business established occupancy. And the code was listed as two thousand square feet for the village business district, but was listed N A for the office district. And so the, the um, the proposal is to limit it likewise to two thousand square feet for the maximum gross floor area for businesses.
Do we have any comments from the public on this? Tiffany?
Hi, Tiffany Scarlett, forty five Division Street, Esmond turning, eighty three Franklin Avenue is resident. Um, I'm not really sure where this prohibition on size came from. There was an extraordinary amount of work done when I was a village board member on to the very valid comp plan that still exists. Um, and that comp plan specifically did not limit the size of a new city office district. So I guess I'm curious as to where this idea came from and under what study or parameters or how we are going about. Why? Yes, that's my basic question. Why?
I, I.
And it was not a Scrivener's error. I, I read somewhere in a paper, because I do read them, that they said it was perhaps a Scrivener's error. It was not.
Well, why did you leave it out of the two thousand?
It was not meant, it was, there was no intention to limit the size of uses in the office.
Was there no intention or just didn't happen?
There was no intention to limit the sizes of the office.
So there was a discussion about it.
Exactly. It was done very specific. If you read through the, read through the comprehensive plan and the local laws that were adopted. And the legislative intent of that, those local laws, when they were all adopted, they were done at the very same time, the legislative intent is very wrong. It was specific. And I don't believe that you can just do that willy nilly without any kind of study. Understand that at the time that we limited use, the size of uses in the village, we did a very extensive study. You know, that dealt with uh, the size of storefronts, the square footage of the uses, how they were used, how you could, you know, change uses. Why you could change uses, when, and the parameters under which you could do so. Um, and so all of those things were taken into consideration when the limits were put in place for the village business district. It's a very specific limitation for a very specific reason. The creation of the office district was done so that there would be. A tremendous amount of office space where we thought it would be needed. Pandemic hit, they changed life changes, perhaps we need to update our comp plan. But I'm not sure that that two thousand square foot limitation is just something that the board can.
What year was that?
Imposed without any type of studying and response to it.
Eleven years, essentially.
I, I understand that, but that valid, that comprehensive plan is still valid to that. Until you adopt another one, it is still your comprehensive plan. I hear many people say that, I have to tell you, from personal experience, I'm very offended. Cause that comprehensive plan alone, portable housing component, is still your valid comp, comp plan.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Um, but there was um, a, a, a review done by Nelson Pope and Voorhees. I don't see it in the packet. It was part of.
It's not part of the public record as far as I'm aware.
It was part of a secret review, I believe. Um, so that should be.
I'd be impressed.
They should do a study, I remember.
Yeah, again, I agree. We talk about transparency and part of that is if you're having a study done with respect to a particular use and the size of a use.
And why you wanna prohibit the size of a use, that the public should be part of that discussion.
Yeah, pretty.
Um, and I think that's all I want to say about that. I don't really know that we have a good reason to regulate that size in the, in the office district. I haven't heard one as of yet. Have you, the board members have one?
It was really just to be consistent, right? That was the way we brought up.
It was to be consistent and we felt that. That allowing, having no, absolutely no, uh, no control over the size of a, of a business back there. I mean, it's called the office district, but there are very few offices there, let's be honest. So that whole designation over the years sort of never took root.
Oh, absolutely. We intend, we fully intended for that to be, you know, at the, at the time that it was adopted and the office district was created. As you know, it didn't exist prior to the two thousand and nine conflict. And when it was created, it was created for that specific purpose, anticipating a need. Obviously, like I said, pandemic hit, things went sideways.
But that, how many years, what year, what year was it adopted?
Two thousand and nine.
So the pandemic hit a full decade later. So e- even in that intervening decade, we're only three years, there was still no offices.
That the people that did all those studies, Inner Science, Tony Tohill and all the people that worked, died, we, we were genuinely trying to do the right thing, but like I said.
I understand that, of course, as we are.
Reason for it now, so I, I'm curious as to the.
Well, so let's, let's get the Nelson Pope and Voorhees review.
Yeah.
So we can all read it.
Should be tabled as that?
Yes, okay, next meeting.
So, okay, I like.
I'm just surprised that you're okay with, with limiting one zone and not anyone.
But that's.
Uses in the village business district were limited for a very specific purpose, and that was to prohibit formalist stores by not actually prohibiting formalist stores. But by dealing with the width, the size and the dimensions of those formalist stores, so that they would not be interested in those spaces.
Yeah.
We cannot directly regulate them under New York state law. So that was the impetus behind the size regulation in two thousand and nine.
There's a fairly broad use table for the office districts as well. There's nothing to do with offices.
Yes.
Like a general, like a general store.
And those were things that we really clearly discussed. Those were uses that were existing in those districts. And those are uses that we wanted to encourage to become part of that district. We, originally and, and very much so, and you're gonna see this is when you attempt to redo a comprehensive plan, you're gonna see. You know, your village business district and your outskirts of your village business district, which are traditionally your office space. As you transition out into your residential district.
The question.
That was the, the transition that we were trying to.
Another question about the N A designation. What limit would a. Would a, would a store hit before the village had any control? Is there, is it whatever size you can build a building?
And you still have that, I still have that, that ten thousand made box restricting.
Okay, so you could have a ten thousand under, as the code exists right now, you could have a ten thousand foot general store.
Well, the, no, the superstore definition.
That, right, where does that kick in?
There are other, there are other same, same part of the code.
That's ten thousand square, any structure, ten thousand square feet with a retail component.
So.
If it doesn't have a retail component, arguably, I'd have to see the definition again. I don't have it in front of me.
I do know that general store is a permitted use back there.
Otherwise, the um, furnishing, furniture store and hardware store has a special exception permit with, I think, three thousand square feet or thirty five hundred square feet.
That's right.
And, and so your, your intention was to maintain the DODs, like the type of DODs meter, sort of outdoor patio furniture store. Which they really wouldn't necessarily ma- maintain on Main Street, but if we just, we like to have in the village, it was a relatively large use to have. You know, an outdoor furniture store. So that is what was taken into consideration was existing uses and to, that's an attempt to maintain what we had.
Alright, well, so we have a motion to table?
I'll take that motion.
Motion by trustee course, seconded, seconded by trustee Kane, so we will table that until April ninth meeting.
Yeah.
Alls in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Tabled until April ninth. So that gets us to a discussion item. We have the Sag Harbor backyard project to make a presentation. Are they here? Discussion?
I'll text them, they were supposed to be here.
Do you want to schedule it for next month? Bob, we could do that.
Let me just try and check.
Let's move on and come back to it if, if he's here.
Okay, so then that, we'll pause on that and we'll move to action items. We have resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing electronic delivery of bids and requests for proposals. Do you have a motion?
The individual is on Zoom.
Oh, he's on Zoom.
I can ask him on the wheel, but is that great?
Yep, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi there, how are you?
Hi.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for uh, accommodating us. I know this was last minute, really appreciate it. Um, my name is Neila Oza. Uh, I'm an architect. Uh, my company is Oza Sabbath Architects. Uh, and I have with me Anthony Madonna. Um, he is with Guildhall. I'll briefly introduce the project. And perhaps if, if there's any questions, we can, uh, we can answer them. Uh, at the end of the, the, the conversation and Anthony, you can chime in whenever you need to. Um, so uh, this is a student art project. Um, it involves um, a fairly um, sort of unused civic space in, uh, in, not unused. But uh, sort of uh, under uh, appreciated, I feel, civic space in Sag Harbor Village, which is the parking lot. Uh, and uh, it has to do with the fact that the parking lot is topographically a very challenged area. And it has been since the village was settled back in the seventeen hundreds. And it is a feature such as this that we use to uh, include children. Uh, and young people to understand what. Uh, and young people to understand what would happen in a space like this in the context of climate change. Um, essentially, what happened during Sandy is a uh aspect of our village that would continue to happen over time. And uh young people are uh predisposed to understand a situation such as this one, where over time. Um, water coming in will simply just make the inundation in the parking lot uh worse and worse and worse. Um, as an aside, this is just intended to be a separate conversation, because we understand the village is undertaking a fairly extensive comprehensive plan. And this is an alternate voice that we like to introduce um into this conversation so that. Uh, long term planning is as um uh um put into the foreground as immediate concerns, which are very, very valid. Um, Anthony, you want to say something about the teen arts council and then we can talk about the art aspect of this project?
Of course. So hi, my name's Anthony Madonna. I'm the director of learning in New York, sat Guildhall in East Hampton. And as part of that, I lead our Guildhall Teen Arts Council, which is a collective of twenty two high school age teenagers from. Four different high schools in the area who are part time employees at Guildhall. Over the past month, um the Teen Arts Council has been working with Nele to understand this issue, looking at the history of the space from when it was once a pond, Georgia's Pond. To um Hurricane Sandy. Day. And they have taken their understanding of the work that Nele has shared and has. Turn that into public artworks, looking at the work of Jenny Holzer, um Henkelis Thomas, Phyllis Gonzalez Torres. They have created. Um, two video projection installations, a sculptural uh light and rubber duck installation. As well as several buttons and postcards that all bring awareness to this issue that will complement the research that Nele. Has been doing. And what it's really interesting about what they have done is that they're using humor. To highlight quite a significant issue and to draw people in to want to understand it. So to look at the fact that the Sag Harbor parking lot is indeed a bathtub. They've taken that motif of a bathtub and their public works feature quite a lot of rubber ducks. To bring humor into the situation, so it draws the viewer in. And then allows them to enter Nele's work and research with. A sense of lightness to absorb information rather than confront it.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you.
Way back to Nele now?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. And so the.
We're searching for Nele. I know we stay somewhere.
I see that. Ah, there you are, Nele.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to remember, say, yeah. So um, yeah, that so that's a, it's a great preamble to the group of kids. They are from local schools. Um, and very, very motivated. It's been a really uh enlightening experience, honestly, to work on a. Problem or a research project along with kids, because their approach to these subjects. Uh, is oftentimes without any preconceived notions or biases, and they simply see the problem as as it is. Um, and so for me, as a working professional, it's it's been a great experience. So to talk a little bit more about the project, uh through the course of our sort of. Understanding together about this problem, Sandy became a really important motif, Hurricane Sandy. In that uh it was acknowledged by everybody in the in 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 the workshop that Hurricane Sandy is a is a kind of um. It's a strange historical event in that it is not just historical, but it also protons our future. There is going to be a time when uh events like Hurricane Sandy, one can debate how often they would uh occur and what they would do. But the fact that they would occur is without debate. And so this notion about Hurricane Sandy being something that needs to be memorialized and something we need to bear witness to, became a part of our workshop. So the artwork simply established the level of the water that came uh to fill the parking lot. And that level has been established fairly accurately. Michael Hemmer, a land surveyor, who's worked on multiple village projects, very kindly uh uh donated his time. As have other professionals who I work with to articulate what exactly this level is. Um, Michael Hemmer is also going to um put some spot elevations along where the water came in. Um, such as Beacon, such as the Wharf, such as Glover Street, to understand what would happen in the future and what is our threshold condition beyond which we as a village need to get concerned. About water breaching our shores and eventually coming into the parking lot. So all those data points have been provided to the kids and they respond with artwork in in a way that, as Anthony says, is not reactive. It's simply filled with humor and. A a way to establish a conversation in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Nele. Is there anything I I would, you certainly have my support and I don't want to speak for the members of the board, but.
Sounds great.
If there's anything we can do as a local government to support you, we certainly would be willing to.
Are there sketches?
Yeah.
What's the ask? What's the yes, exactly.
And what's the final product?
What do you want from us?
Yeah, so we have, uh, I provided Kathy uh in an email and and Bob as well. Thank you, Bob, for me, for meeting me. Um, uh, a few sketches that identify how we want to represent the water level. It's very simple. They're basically tapes that we establish on uh uh local buildings around there and we're in conversation with the actual property owners to make sure they're okay with it. So that's one piece of art. Um, the other artwork is uh in the medians around the parking lot. The the kids have these uh uh lit uh vertical uh uh s- uh stakes. That will again establish the water level. So that's the second piece. And then the third piece, as Anthony mentioned, is a a projection piece that will go on uh one of the uh 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 buildings around the parking lot. Um, we're trying to understand how to do it. The 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 lights on the parking lot are so bright that anything that is put there in a in a in a lit manner actually gets gets bled out. I'm not sure the the village can dim those lights, but you know, that 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 is our challenge right now to find a space. Where we can project something that's going to be visible in, let's say, the dusk time period for community members to walk by and see and engage.
It it's a very low key presentation.
Right.
It it puts tape on the grounds and on the buildings, which shows how far the water went and how high it came up. And then they put these sticks with rubber duckies on them to show how high it got. And then there's a slideshow that's projected on one of the buildings to find one that's not too lit, and the whole thing will be less than twenty four hours.
But it doesn't sound like Nele, you're ready for that yet. You haven't figured out how to do it yet?
Uh, we have figured out how to do all of this.
Yeah.
You have.
I have a question. Would this, this would just be a one time presentation or was this with this something?
One time.
Yeah.
It only lasts twenty four hours?
And less than seventy five people too. Just a thing they're gonna do one afternoon.
I think that you, right, you would, I've obviously, they would have to go through the apply to or permit to do it.
This is a special event.
Yeah.
Special event.
So.
Yeah, right.
But we should, I would, I would say the board would certainly.
We're supportive. Anthony, anything we're missing?
No, that's exactly it. It um, we're hoping to install and present this work of the evening of Friday, April fifth.
Yep.
Um, where we would install the work in the parking lot. And then have a gathering at Kid Squid where Nele's research will be present and both Nele. His collaborators and the Teen Arts Council will be available for people to come up and have a conversation.
But you, you know, we we have got a thirty day.
What I would do, if I could say this, can we, can you get us, I would say, fill out the application as soon as you can?
Of course.
If the board may have a special meeting or have special meetings coming up, we need to get that approved before April fifth.
Of course. I think that.
Get that to us.
Is is April fifth a hard dead, a hard date for you? Is there any flexibility in your end with the April fifth date?
Um, we can, of course, look at at other dates. It's the hope to to do it on that date. It's something we've cleared with. Quite a lot of people. Um, I apologize for the delay. This is the first time Guildhall is working with Sag Harbor Village on a public work. So we were not. Like truly aware of the timeline of things, which is why we requested to speak here.
If you could do it, our next meeting is April ninth, is the regular board meeting. So a few.
Four days after they want to do it.
Yeah.
No, they want to do it four days before.
Yeah, five days before.
Five days before.
So what I'm saying is if you can be flexible with your schedule, either that or get us the, you have to get us the paperwork really quickly.
We have a couple of budget meetings coming.
Yes, yeah, we could definitely accomplish, yeah.
But work with the village clerk to get the paperwork completed.
Okay, great. We will get that done and I can, we can have that all filed quite quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just given that this is an opportunity to speak to you, we would love for the entire board to be present for, uh, you know, we welcome you to to come and see it and it, this is intended to be. Uh, as I say to the kids, they're essentially a political action committee so that they speak for their constituency, which is young children or or young people. And I think it would be great to have you guys there as well. Uh, because it's it's something that I I believe will bolster the the village's long term planning uh as 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 a fact.
I'm thinking for myself, Nele, if I'd have known in advance, I would have changed my vacation plans to leave the country.
Well, to that point, while Guildhall is one feature or one important stop in this, this is obviously not a one and done thing. This is a thing that the village is going to deal with for a long time, and I believe. Young people have to have a voice along the way, so it's it's.
Yes, we all agree with that completely.
Totally.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work on this, Nele, and Anthony, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really interesting.
So that. Thank you for the presentation.
And thank you for the humor part that goes with the, yeah, you need more of that.
The rubber duckies.
So I was in the middle of an action item, which was uh authorizing electronic delivery of bids and request for proposals. Did we get a motion on that?
No.
Okay, so I have a motion on that?
Finally, is this not the case now?
What's that?
Is this not the case now? You have to get written news or something.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make the, I'll second it. Okay, so. Bob, motion by trustee Plum.
We're getting a little punchy.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, so so moved.
So moved.
Resolution uh for the mayor to sign the mayor's monarch pledge. What this is. Just to to give you a quick brief on this. The monarch butterfly population has been declining ninety percent over time. And Stony Brook University has found that, I guess, the the, when they sprayed for the mosquitoes, it damaged the the lobby for the monarchs. The monarch butterflies, they only nest in milkweed. So milkweed is an important plant to have or plant in your backyard. What this pledge will do is it will. Uh, get Sag Harbor on board, hopefully with the other east end communities to create these safe havens, not just for the monarchs. But also for other pollinators such as bees and. And other insects that do that. So. Um, I'd like to move forward with this. We were at the at the east end mayors and supervisors meeting, uh, Mayor Truhold from Quag gave a brief presentation. I was interested in joining, so I would like the board's permission to move this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to uh the resolution, March twenty twenty four, sublease agreement of Five Bridge Street Sag Harbor for parking purposes. So this is a sublease. That uh an agreement that I came to with Five Bridge Street to lease the Gasfall parking lot or sublease it from them. Uh, for a term of three years. Myself and trustee Corish had a brief meeting there uh to go over the parking lot and how we would uh. Do some, actually get it back to the way it was, maybe do some improvements. Um, possibly open it up to the uh parking lot that's behind the Shaboni I G A. So this is the sublease agreement, which gets the village three years gas ball lot. I believe the sum was fifty two thousand five hundred. Per year. Uh, our actual bid with National Grid was fifty thousand dollars a year. So do I have a motion to implement the sublease agreement?
Did we iron out those legal questions you had?
We did.
Okay.
Council did, and uh anything that we do on that property, of course, we have to consult uh the D E C and National Grid before we do any improvement.
And and the owner or the other leasur?
Yes.
Yeah. Mister Pop.
Yep. So do I have a?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. We have a res- next is resolution, March twenty twenty four, to authorize additional points for elected and appointed positions of the Sag Harbor volunteer ambulance corps. This is to give the uh the members that are that run squad. Uh, which is now three days, it's three overnight periods in a row, which is from eight P M to six P M. I just actually just got off of squad uh myself. This is to authorize to give them five additional points a year towards their low sap. I can't vote on this, obviously. But do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings a resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing contract with Cameron Engineering pursuant to C P F Water Quality Improvement Funding. Award for Sewer Service Area Expansion Phase Two Engineering Design. Did you want to speak on that?
Yeah, um briefly, this is following on. The next phase of our project, we went through engineering design for K and L. We're funded for that. We're going to go out to bid. And the next project is moving sewer in south on Main Street, so we start to look around out of pond. And John Street Cove. So this is for the engineering study that will be the basis of that project, and so I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Corish, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That brings us to resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing the issuance of bonds in a principal amount not to exceed twelve million dollars. To finance the construction of improvements to the village sewer system, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is twelve million dollars. And appropriating set amount for such purpose. This would be a roll call vote.
Do we want it to?
Do we want to speak on this or?
Yeah, um. So go ahead, do you go ahead?
Make the motion first? Um, to and then discuss?
Well, I believe we have to take a roll call vote on it. There's no motion.
There's no motion. Okay, yes, go ahead.
This is is for twelve million dollars. Uh, this is fully supported by more than twelve million dollars of grant um funds that we have. Uh, we have been allocated. The idea would be that this project, and we have negotiated with the C P Fs, that we would be able to get reimbursement in stages along the way. So we would hope that we would get reimburse us to the three billion dollar stages that we feel we can't go to, but we can't go to bid. But I feel like that we're fully funded for the project. So this is basically to give us a comfort factor on, and if you want to add to that.
I I think you've said it well, but I listen, just the comments made earlier about capital planning, financial planning for the village. You know, we're looking, the prioritization of projects are based on needs. But every one of the long term capital projects that we're looking at, we're trying to look for financially sustainable projects and self funding projects. And this is maybe the best example we could ever have of one, where almost the a- all of the capital project costs are reimbursable grants or pre funded grants. The bond resolution is to make sure the village is covered to finance this, based on timing of grants in the worst case scenario, and it's a very conservative. Um, resolution, but um the expectation is that for a twelve to fifteen million dollar capital investment, the residents of the village. Will pay a very negligible amount amortized over the life of the assets, almost nothing. Um.
Does that help you, Russell, a little bit?
No, I don't understand. I'm.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
It's okay. What I'm saying is that you do specific things we need to report.
We agree.
We agree on that.
I agree.
And that's why we're going to do the comp plan.
Thank you.
Um, is there a motion for this or is it just a roll call vote?
Right?
Roll call.
Yep.
All right, so.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Corish, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Bye.
Now we do.
Now we do a roll call.
So Mayor Vodella?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hay?
Yes.
Trustee Corish?
Yes.
Trustee Plum?
Aye.
Trustee Kane?
Aye.
So we've got three yeses and two ayes.
That brings us to resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing mayor to sign municipal advisor services agreement. I have a motion.
Uh, I'll move it.
I'll second.
And this is for, this is for a munistat agreement?
Yes.
Yeah, which is our financial advisor, just want to keep hammering that theme, um, who advised us on the resolution. Um, who advised us on the resolutions, the planning, the financial planning for the village, and we're very close with our treasurer.
Okay, so motion by deputy mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing notice. To proposers for traffic engineering services. This is that, the R F P for traffic, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second? Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing notice to proposers, R F P for professional. Engineering and environmental science services.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane.
What these services are?
These are um, services that came out of the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committees, both traffic and and the environmental services. The traffic is to study um, traffic circle for Jermaine, Brick Hill and Rowan, Main Street intersections. To study Water Street, um, Long Island Avenue proposals that were presented to the study. Also, um, the school route that's being proposed, the engineering, environmental engineering services, or study. Open spaces, Havens Beach, um, um, silly farm as well as.
Redwood location.
The the open water access areas for public.
And garden and.
And Garden and Spring Street as well, which is very close to the pond that Nele's presentation speaks to. That existing land next to Kids' Bend.
Henry's.
Henry's Pond. Don't know Henry. George's Pond.
George's.
Yes. George's. Um. That's, that's what these R F Ps are for.
And then just, and then all that's also the engineering, environment, and science applies to that too.
Um, traffic and environmental, the the environmental ones are for the open spaces, the traffic ones are for the road. Roadways associated with with the work going on. Both, both were worked on and and proposed to the village board by Postac over the last several months. In stages, and this is the culmination of all that work.
Okay, we have a motion by deputy mayor Hay. We have, do we get a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution, March twenty twenty four, establishing energy benchmarking requirements for certain municipal buildings. We've, we've done this before. This is part of the climate smart community.
Yes, um, we just needed to amend it.
Do I have a motion? Motion by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorization to advertise for proposal launch service.
Number twelve.
What's that?
Twelve.
Authorized.
Inter municipal.
All right, go back to the fire marshal. Let's do the number thirteen first. For the launch services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is for the village to launch?
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us to, back to twelve, March twenty, resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing the mayor to sign intermunicipal agreement. With the town of Southampton for fire marshal services. We've had this in the past. This is to cover us in case there's a major incident. Or if our fire marshal is not available. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing Mayor Gardella to sign an agreement with Paychecks Incorporated. So what we're going to be doing is using paychecks as our payroll system service. So do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorizing Mayor Gardella to sign an agreement with power D M S for the police department.
So this will be their scheduling, time management, and specifically designed for police departments, and it with multiple. Um, companies, and this was the best suited.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution, March twenty twenty four, approving appointment of Mario Barant- Barantes as part-time police officer.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, who have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
And keep them coming, Lieutenant Drake.
We gone, we left, yeah. Acceptance, okay, resolution, March twenty twenty four, authorization of mayor to sign agreement with Surf Master Sport Fishing charters.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Acceptance of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five grievance adjustments recommended by the town of Southampton assessors. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, second?
Sure.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Authorization to accept January twenty twenty four bank reconciliations and collateral reports. Motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Lieutenant Drake requests authorization to advertise for the positions of traffic control officers and lifeguards for the twenty twenty fourth season. I just want to speak on this briefly. Uh, we met with the superintendent Nichols, Jeff Nichols. Uh, who welcomed us to come into the school on career day or to set up. Something with guidance where we can recruit traffic officers and lifeguards, so we're, we're being more proactive when it comes to. Getting more traffic co- control officers out there. So, we have a motion to advertise for the positions.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Robert Bory, half harbor master, request permission to hire the following dock personnel for the twenty twenty four boating season. At the designated pay rate effective June first, twenty twenty four. Wilson Bennett, nineteen dollars an hour. Patrick Caulfield, eighteen dollars an hour. Cooper Costa Henstead, sixteen dollars an hour. Pierre Duplessis, nineteen dollars an hour. Dominic Mazzio, sixteen dollars an hour. William McSweeney, sixteen dollars an hour. Christian Pantina, nineteen dollars an hour. Anthony Ponzini, eighteen dollars an hour. Steven Ponzini, sixteen dollars an hour. Troy Remkus, eighteen dollars an hour. Charles Schaefer, sixteen dollars an hour. And Michael Schaefer, sixteen dollars an hour. Also, Mr. Bory requests to increase harbor master Christian Dorié to thirty-five dollars per hour. Harbor master Nicholas Pupo to thirty-one dollars an hour. And dock master Jack Reiser to twenty-six dollars per hour. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Robert Bory, harbor master, request to go out to bid for Marina waste removal for the twenty twenty four boating season.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Bruce Scavoni, fire marshal, requests permission for building inspector Tin Oso to attend. Energy code enforcement training. Class for the Clean Energy Communities Program on April fourth, twenty twenty four. At Malloy College in Amityville, New York. I believe this class gives us point, three hundred points towards.
It's, it's going to be big for, yeah, to bring us up to the next level, so.
So Tin has agreed to go, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Richard Scavoni, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests that Brett Loving be placed on the insurance rolls. As an active probationary fire member. Welcome, Brett. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Alan Segal requests permission to operate a commercial charter from mooring G. Dash zero six for the twenty twenty four boating season.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Dane Dana Diedrickson requests permission to operate a commercial charter from Marine Park Dock number eighteen. For the twenty twenty four boating season.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Kristen Santori, programming manager of the church, requests permission to have spring jubilee celebration on Saturday, March fourth. Twenty twenty four from eleven A M to five P M at forty-eight Madison Street, the church. Do I have a motion?
I'm gonna move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Jim Stewart of Katie's Courage Incorporated requests permission to have a five K run walk fundraiser on Saturday, April thirteenth. Twenty twenty four from six A M to ten thirty A M. Also requesting permission to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf, Route one fourteen. Sag Harbor Turnpike. Lastly, requesting assistance of highway department and three to four police officers pending insurance.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Cheryl Newbauer of Massapequa Park Bike Club requests permission. To ride through the village for their tour of the Hamptons on Sunday, September twenty second, twenty twenty four, from seven A M to six P M. The tour will start at the end of Southampton High School. Will start and end at Southampton High School's, pardon me. Mister Newbauer also requests to place signs, lawn signs at turning intersections of the tour route. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second, but I have a que- I just want to make a comment or question that, I just want to make sure that, I know this route goes very little through Sag Harbor.
Right.
Um, just, the police department hasn't been asked to participate or help?
No, but they've reviewed it.
Okay, and they're awesome.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Katie Plum of Sag Harbor Farmers Market Incorporated requests permission to have the annual farmers market on Saturday morning, starting at May eighteenth. Twenty twenty four to October twenty-six, twenty twenty four, from nine A M to one P M. Also requesting to place signs at the following locations. Main Street, Jermaine Avenue, Long Wharf, Bay Street, Route one fourteen. And Madison Street from May fourth, twenty twenty four to May eighteenth. Twenty twenty four. I just want to say this has been a very successful and organized event, and I wanted to thank Katie personally. For doing just an awesome job at that mark, at that farmers market, so.
So moved.
Thank you, mayor. May I say something?
Yes.
That that date, May fourth to May eighteen? But I'm just, the other, the little signs, the black and white signs, they often go down the same day. So I don't know what that May fourth and May eighteenth is about, so.
Okay, I think they're saying through that period, time period, that you're placing the signs.
You normally put a bigger sign at the end of Long Wharf.
Uh, no, all the signs from the farmers markets go down.
Okay.
So is it May eighteen to October twenty-fourth? Do you do it every time this is marked?
Yes.
I can testify to that, because I always see Katie put the signs up.
So, what's the modification?
So.
Do you want to modify something?
No, the last line says May fourth.
Yeah, to May eighteen, yeah, that's.
But, but that was thinking that there was going to be a big sign at the end of main shit.
They used to put a large sign. They used to put a large sign at the end of Long Wharf, and you're only allowed a two-week period for the large signs. Then they put the other small individual signs up daily of the farmers market.
So the individuals are May eighteen through October twenty-four, and then the large sign is May four through May eighteen.
If there is a large sign.
If there is a large sign.
You have that option.
Well, you're treated for the option.
Yes.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
All right, motion by trustee Corish.
Second.
Seconded by.
Trustee Corish will make the sign for you, he said.
There you go, there you go.
Favor?
Aye.
You got recruited, Derek.
You've got to be careful there.
Okay, Joanne Lyles of. This is in Jordan's honor, L T D, request permission to have a five K run walk through the village on Sunday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty four. From six A M to twelve P M. Also requesting permission to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf. And Route one fourteen from July fourteenth. Twenty twenty four to July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty four. Additionally, requesting to have two aerial trucks hoisting large American flags. This cannot be placed on village sidewalks. Lastly, requesting assistance of two police officers. Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Motion by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Teresa Rowan, founder and executive director of I Tribe. Request permission to have Antigua Barbuda Hampton's Fest at John Steinbeck Park and Marine Park on Saturday, August tenth. Twenty twenty four from ten A M to two P M. She also requests to have Antigua Barbada, Barbuda Hampton Sailboat Challenge Awards Party. From five thirty P M to eight P M. Are they, are they going to do that party at Marine Park again? Uh, Kate? Do you know, are they doing that?
Or, or, and like, because last year they requested Steinbeck Park, and we, Steinbeck Park was the salt was just being laid there, we, we pushed it to Marine Park.
We could be, okay.
So they would like to go back and do it at Steinbeck Park.
But that's not what they're saying here.
Saying both.
Well, they're going to have the, it looks like.
John Steinbeck Park and then Marine Park as an alternate location.
Okay, so we're going to.
Could I just ask for all of these? All of these have been run through the police department? They're okay with all of them?
Everyone that comes in.
I have to say, last year they did a very good job, was very organized.
Mm-hmm.
Did they have a big tent?
Yes, yes. Do I have a motion?
So are, they're planning, I just want to ask, they're planning to use boats Steinbeck Park and Marine Park for the office, or one or the other?
Steinbeck Park and then Marine Park as a backup option if Steinbeck Park didn't work.
Okay, thank you.
And they're going to put up a tent?
Yes.
So they know about talking with Dean and irrigation and all that, all that stuff?
At either place, yes.
At either place, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us to the improvement of the bills. Motion to approve the payments presented in warrant number forty-two, the amount of forty-four, excuse me, four hundred and forty-five thousand, thirteen dollars and forty-two cents. Motion to approve payments presented in warrant forty-three, in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Motion to approve payments presented in warrant number forty-four, in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars, twenty-five cents. Motion to approve the payments presented in warrant forty-five, in the amount of seven hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. So I have a motion to approve all the warrants, forty-two through forty-five, as I just listed.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Cora, second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us to our public comment section. We have fifteen minutes, public session. Input for comments and questions, three minutes per speaker.
Katie Plum, you need to start. I was just wondering what if I just sensed a little pushback from Don Parker's recognition that we keep the same number, or you can also, one from Sag Harbor Hills, that sixty-seven.
I don't think there's, yeah, I don't think it's pushback. I think that there's a legal question, that we have, we would have to prepare something legally to do that. I, I told you, I don't know if you were here for the mooring work session.
No, I wasn't.
I, that was my original, when I, we first started this, I wanted to limit it to what it was currently.
Oh, right.
So, I don't, you know, we're still discussing it.
Still trying to figure it out.
Yep.
Right. See, he seemed to be adamant about it.
Well, that's, he doesn't get the vote on it.
Well, I'm wondering, I, I, I mean, that's, oh, good, that's great.
No, we heard, we're considering it, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yeah.
Good evening, Anthony Gravas, Sixty-EighteenonStreet. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, keep the conversation going on workforce housing. Um, the last work session, I think I was, uh, I felt that went very well. I think there were a lot of good ideas thrown around. But I think for the next workshop you do, I think you really need to focus on zoning and sort of what is currently permitted under the code and what is not permitted under the code. And I think just to cite an example, one thing that just people kept bringing up was the Marsden Street properties. And it seemed like some people, first of all, aren't even really, don't know who owns those properties, and it's like the school owns it and that sort of thing. But, um, you know, even if the present owner wanted to or wanted to sell that property, those properties to somebody who wanted to do the workforce housing development there, it wouldn't be permitted by code, right? The most anybody could do there on any of those individual lots right now is a single ADU on each of those lots. So I think that gets into the whole notion of the floating zone, which are where I think people were instinctively, uh, negative about that idea, but without really understanding why something like that might be necessary, without having to really kind of radically change the zoning code altogether. So, I, yeah, I thi- and, you know, people are talking about, which I've been in favor of from day one, which is building apartments over existing, uh, one-story stores and things like that, and I've gone on about this ad nauseam. For, you know, right now, the, the village business district, uh, apartments are a special exemption in the, in the business district, and they're not permitted in the office district. I mean, just think about it, that's intuitively ridiculous for Sag Harbor, that that shouldn't be, just apartments over stores should not be, uh, um, permitted use. So, um, I, I think that all kind of needs to be explained, I think, to the, 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 um, public at large, you know, these kind of code uh, parameters and why, why things may need to, to change, or get to say, oh, let's do more affordable housing. We have to make, actually make changes to the code to make that happen. Um, second, uh, other thing I wanted to bring up in that regard is just a few things. You know, I was just reading the, the paper, um, you know, program I was completely unaware of. Um, there's this ADU program from the, um, I believe it's the, this, from the state that, um, offers you, um, maybe it's a county, but anyway, it's hundred thirty-four.
Yeah, it's a state.
Eight-five thousand, uh, in grants.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if Sag Harbor is participating in that. I, it says Southampton.
Southampton, I just saw, and but Tommy John did talk about it.
Yeah, he did speak about it at the workshop. It's a state program. We don't, we don't need, there's nothing that the village needs to do. It's available.
Yeah, so anybody can do that.
Right, but the town of Southampton was crafting the same type of program, but I believe the state's program has income limitations on it, whereas the town of Southampton's does not.
So I think it could have an impact that in Sag Harbor, if you're on the Southampton side, you can do it. If you're on the East Hampton side, I think it's still questionable.
So here's the, this is the, right, this is what I've been speaking about, and I've been talking about, is this needs to be a concerted effort with all the local municipalities working together on a common type of plan. Like Sag Harbor has its own little unique situations that we need to address. I've talked about it multiple times, and it seems to now be taking root, which is what's in our inventory. We have buildings, historic buildings, that have multiple apartments in them that are pre-existing non-conforming. How do we preserve them? How do we keep them in the inventory? Make them affordable? And maintain the structure, so.
Or even having an existing commercial building inside, in the, in the business district that is, once had apartments, they've been converted into offices or some others second floors of stores over the time, and now, you know, people wanna convert them back to apartments. How do you make that, first of all, make it legal, legal to do that? Secondly, encourage, encourage people to do that.
Um, the issue is that these apartments or these houses that have multiple apartments in them go on the market. They're sold, and they become single-family residents, and all those people are displaced.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I've been guilty of doing some, some of those topics too, but I, I.
I looked at, yeah, I looked at a study from twenty twenty-one that had multiple, I believe there were fifteen or sixteen houses, and they were approximately sixty to seventy units. Where that stands right now, we'd have to update the study and see where we're at, but we're slow, we need to maintain our inventory and then build on it.
And I'm, but only one thing I'm finding is that there is, I think, really a, a sea change in how people are thinking about having accessory dwelling units, really seeing the value to that. Even to the point where seeing that they're actually more valuable to have these than, say, a pool house. Or, um, you know, say, in fact, one project that I'm working on now is they have a, a pool house, you know, two hundred square foot pool house, and the, the owners are finding they have absolutely no use for that pool house. They never use it, so they go, okay, why don't we see if we can expand it to make it a qualify for an ADU? And, you know, that's why I was mentioning to you before, you know, to Chin before, is that, you know, these, these folks, they don't need it for the income, but they just like the idea of having somebody on their property, you know, year-round. Um, one final thing that I wanted to suggest about the, um, the ADU and the code in the R twenty district, uh, maybe a little bit of a reach here, but.
I'm sorry, before you go into that, Anthony, though, I just want to say, even for that example, cuz you mentioned that would be for a family member to stay there, and the.
Would be, no, in this case, it would be general.
Okay, I just want, the, the ADU provisions we enacted were for, you know, you know, a moderate income, affordable housing, family members.
Yeah.
And so just wanna make sure that that's, that's a restriction, so, yeah, yeah.
But the, the, the income is controlled, but the rent is not.
Yeah, we haven't, to his point, we still need to put legislation in place for the administration of this.
Um, and one tweak I, I would suggest, you know, one possible change to the ADU, uh, rules in the R twenty district that I might suggest here is, um, so one thing that you're, you know, I'm finding with trying to, to put ADUs on small, relatively small apartments, or even bigger properties in the village, is that, you know, you need a certain amount of, of to get to four hundred, uh, you know, to get to two hundred eighty square feet at the minimum, and really, you know, for practical purposes, people wanna do around four hundred, four hundred fifty square feet. It's, it's sometimes hard to do that because you're running into lot coverage problems, you're running to setback problems. One thing that you might wanna consider for ADUs, and only ADUs, is to change the height limit, um, for an, uh, for an ADU, uh, for an accessory, accessory structures in Sag Harbor now limited at fifteen feet tall. Possibly consider changing that to twenty feet for, um, specifically for ADUs. The idea is to be able to build opposite about, um, so the buildings have a smaller footprint, um, potentially eliminating, um, lot coverage rules, uh, uh, lot coverage and setback problems. Uh, the idea is to create like a little kind of sleeping off. You know, you have a little living area on the ground floor, you have a little sleeping off on, on the.
We did, we, we did reduce the setbacks in the code.
We did.
Yes, ADUs.
I think seventy percent, but we would have to still worry about pyramid.
Yeah, I mean, that would certainly be a limiting factor too, and I wouldn't suggest it be exempt from pyramid, cuz otherwise it's just gonna end up in abuse.
I just wanna make sure.
That's why, as, as horrible as the pyramid law is, if you let it go, it'd be even worse.
Right.
I guess people would immediately start abusing it. Um, but yeah, I mean, this is something to, uh, to put in, just to point of example, in town of Southampton, the limit, the height limit for any kind of accessory structure is twenty feet. So it's not like it's a, a crazy, uh,
It's good to know.
difference in rule, and I would suggest, you know, you probably would wanna put, put a provision in, is that, is that it, it can, can't be taller than an existing primary structure. So, so you've got a one-story house, you can just put a twenty.
So you say, was the town or the village of Southampton has the twenty feet?
Uh, town.
Town, so they got bigger lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that's true. I mean, it's, it's not, um, but having said that, you know, you look at, at the historic inventory in Sag Harbor, and some of the, um, parage house barns that are on these properties, I mean, very many of them have grid sites that are, you know, twenty, twenty-two feet tall, so it's not completely out of char- character. To, um, have a higher accessory structure place.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got your little sewer master plan.
Oh, there you go.
Studying it, uh, carefully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks, Anthony.
Anybody else? Anthony?
Just wanted to go over a couple of resolutions, since we don't have an opportunity to comment on resolutions prior to the adoption. Public comment is limited to active reports. There are at least three resolutions on a, on the agenda which were adopted by the board that authorizes.
Talking about action items?
Yes. That authorize commercial charters for Marine Park, Long Wharrens, and a agreement with a sport fishing charter. And I guess my question for the board is, has parking been considered? I know I got cut off last time, but I'm gonna keep on it. Was parking considered as part of the, what size boats were approved to be commercial charters? How many people are they carrying? Because I will tell you, again, as I said earlier, parking is a serious issue. I'm twisting myself sideways in every planning board, zoning board meeting, dealing with taxpaying residents who are trying to get changes of use that can't do so. And here we are adopting resolution after resolution, which are pretty creative parking problem. We're adopting, and it's, I'm not saying it's wrong, all I'm asking.
I would say that we definitely need to look at the, at the parking, revisit the parking code and see if we can update or if anything needs to be updated. We should definitely take a look at it. And part of, you know, we have a traffic study. I mean.
But that will not be addressing parking.
Right.
And, 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 and.
That a lot. I, the problem is, I just want every taxpayer to be treated exactly the same, and we're not treating everybody the same here.
I wouldn't say that.
With property owners.
I wouldn't say that.
That pay taxes. I, I.
I think there's a difference between treating, treating people fairly and treating, treating everybody the same, and I don't think there's a requirement to treat everybody the same. And I don't believe, to your earlier points, that treat everybody fairly, that every mooring requires a parking space. I just don't believe that.
Not necessarily so, not necessarily so. But if you're operating a commercial charter, they just appear to be, and, and I know this from having been on the board and from watching it over years, charter licenses for village spots appear to be given out really quickly. And I think there needs to be some type of examination in how those are given out, how much parking, and what the upland effects of those charters do. I'm not saying they're bad, and I'm not saying the village board shouldn't be approving charters, but what I'm asking you is to look at parking in a different manner, because you're affecting parking every time you do this. And then when I'm in front of a municipal board asking for approval for a change of use, the only conversation we're having is about parking. And we have a parking problem in court, and I think because of these issues. So I would just ask that in the future, you look into them a little bit more, and then they're not just passed without any discussion whatsoever. At all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Hello?
Hi, uh, good evening. Lisa Stenson, that's the Moore's president of Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association and resident in Seventeen Hillside Drive West. My question is, is a follow-up to this afternoon's workshop meeting, which was fantastic, and thank you again. Uh, there were many thoughtful and substantive comments from the public. So, um, is it the village is planning at this point to evaluate the various feedback received on the outer management area proposed mooring and acreage? And consider postponing changes until the summer twenty-five season, or um, does the village still intend to implement changes for this summer twenty-four season?
I thi- I think it's our intent to do both.